All right. Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Tonight is November 9th, 2023. I am Lisa Ellsworth. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Randy Andes Mahia.
Online.
Commissioner Berlin.
Here.
Commissioner Corning.
Here.
Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Cheryl Ellsworth.
Here.
And I see, and I received a message that Commissioner Bartell may not make it. I did not hear from Commissioner Lassen, but they're not here.
All right.
Commissioner Lassen said he had to take or pick up his way from the airport and couldn't make it via email.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, will everybody join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting on October 12th? Do we have any corrections, comments, adjustments? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Oh, do we have any business from the public? Anyone that wants to speak on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Having none, I will turn it over to Communications.
I don't have any additional communications.
Okay. In that case, I am going to open the public hearing on LA 23-02. This is a legislative amendment that is an adoption of the Employment Buildable Lands Inventory and a 2023-2043 Economic Opportunities Analysis, so a 20-year analysis, an EOA, with Amendment of the Woodburn Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies. Staff lead is Renata Buckley, Director of Special Projects. So, Renata.
And I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who will present. We had a work session last month and an overview of the project. I would like to just note that Commissioner Corning did serve on our technical advisory group. Really appreciate her time. We also had the mayor serving on the technical advisory group. So, any questions, direct them to the commissioner. And then we have present here tonight Brendan Buckley, Johnson Economics, whose firm was selected as following a request for proposals for this work. And Chris will present the staff report. Thanks.
And to say the formality, Madam Chair, if we could formally open the public hearing, maybe go through a couple of the ordinary declarations and then I'll go through my staff.
Absolutely. So, I did actually open the public hearing. And so, if we could have either you or McKenzie help us out with the public hearing procedures?
Sure. So, we don't need a public hearing statement this evening, but we do request any declarations for potential conflicts of interest related to the legislative item to begin the hearing.
Okay. So, note, note to staff, I really need the red light. Help keep me on track. Anyway, let me go ahead and ask our commission, does anybody have any declarations, any conflicts of interest?
No.
Nope. Hearing none. Does anyone in the audience or anyone have a challenge to any member of the commission? Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Staff report.
That was it. I was just gonna begin the staff report.
Okay.
And again, this is probably similar. I was here about a month ago. We, Renata and I, gave a little introduction of the project. This is specifically, these are legislative amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. So, it'd be a supporting document of the Comprehensive Plan, which is the EOA and the BLI. And associated with that will be what we call text amendments to the Comprehensive Plan within the actual documents and changes to goals and policies. Okay. So, we'll be a little briefer than we were last time, but just a quick summary, exactly what is a BLI and an EOA? And why are we updating them? Then we're going to hear from our consultant, who's going to review data and findings. And then at the end, we'll be looking for a recommendation from the Planning Commission for the City Council. Again, legislative items, all legislative items are required to get a recommendation from this body and then the City Council formally adopts them via ordinance after their own public hearing. So, the formal definition for each, and it's pretty good. An EOA analyzes and forecasts growth in the city's industrial and commercial districts, ensuring that an adequate 20-year supply of developable land, developable land is available for businesses and jobs. The BLI, the Buildable Lands Inventory analyzes, quantifies the amount of vacant and partially vacant employment land, so we're not looking at residential properties, that are currently available within our UGB. UGB is our urban growth boundary. Should recall, the urban growth boundary is larger than the actual city limits. And I already got a question earlier from a commissioner, and I'll touch on that at the end. We'll talk about urban reserves. Now, I have a little map at the end of the presentation. Don't let me forget it. And I like, I always keep things simple because it's another way I can really understand them. I think of these really easy. It's an economic forecast for the city and required to do it by the state. Every city is required to do this as part of their comprehensive planning process. It identifies the employment needs and opportunities over the next 20 years for the property within our UGB. It's essentially, I call a supply and demand analysis, right? The supply is how much land do you have? How much developable, buildable land do you have for employment purposes? And how much are you gonna need? What are you forecasting? And there's a really complicated formula that goes into how you make that determination. We don't get to make that determination ourselves. We don't get to do that. We don't get to determine the factors in that analysis ourselves. They come directly from the state and they're, that's the reason we bring in the experts like this to help walk us through, to make sure we're dotting all of our i's. And we've, that's the process that we went through to get here. And again, these are formally required under Goal 9 and a bunch of Oregon administrative rules that accompany that. So, the economic opportunity analysis is just one component. We call it a supplemental document to our comprehensive plan, the big general plan. And you've got to think of this as fitting in just like our transportation system plan, our parks and recreation plan, our, all the sub-area maps that we have. We have an urban renewal district. We have sub-areas for, you know, mixed-use housing. We've got transportation sub-areas out near the interchange. We do a housing needs analysis. All of these various plans, I call them the data and analysis that feeds our comprehensive plan and our general plan. From there, that's where it sort of filters down into the, when we're writing WDO amendments and we're looking at how to change our zoning code, we rely on these documents and our comprehensive plan and those goals and policies to give us some direction. These are the, it's the policy direction to steer the city. That's what drives where we're going to spend our money. The budget is based on these kinds of components. This factor, this one tonight is just the economic opportunities analysis that we work on. And again, as you know, we periodically update all of these plans. We're required to by law, as a matter of fact. Sometimes we get in front of a little bit more often. This one was last updated in 2001, technically. And we did a minor adjustment to make some changes, to do a targeted needs, targeted industries analysis, I'm sorry, about eight years ago.
So, how often would it normally be updated? Every five years?
Well, it's supposed to be five or six. I'll look at it. I think it's every five years cities are supposed to look at whether or not they need to. And if you want to go into the real history of it, that was actually a requirement of the initial goal set by the state. But for funding reasons, they don't, the state doesn't require cities to go in and amend every one of these plans that often. What they do now is they basically have a fund, a pot of money, and cities decide when they think it's an appropriate time to go reach out, get funding to do, say, I need a new TSP because we've expanded in that area, or we have new growth issues, or we're having real issues with housing, so we want to do a new housing needs analysis. Which, in the end, it's probably a better way for local jurisdictions to have more control over when and how they modify their comprehensive plan and these supplemental documents.
But you wouldn't be able to get the support to hire people to help?
That's right. You need to, we basically, you can do it yourself. I don't know many cities that do this on their own. It's pretty complicated.
Their state requires 20-year plans for transportation parks. It's always a 20-year timeframe, depending on how quickly you're growing and your population growth. That can vary. The state has practiced what they call periodic review. I think I have that right, where they force the city, they contact you and say, it's time. They're focusing more on housing, because that's Goal 10. So, then we're Goal 9 right now, our discussion. Periodic review is, by the state agencies, focused more on housing. So, we were not told, but as the Planning Commission and as we conducted our buildable land inventory, I think you're, you can see just how, how much infill has occurred with employment land, our commercial and industrial.
Yeah.
So, walking through some of the actual data and the findings from the EOA and BLI, I'm gonna introduce Brendan Buckley, who's been fantastic. He's with Johnson Economics. We brought him into, he's our, the formal consultant to put together the documents. He really ran the show for us. And he worked with Mig, was your sub-con consultant?
That's right.
Did I have working with you, who assisted as well? Oh, it's just not Angelo anymore. It's just me.
For Brendan, you'll probably reference this, but we had, again, Planning Commission appointed, City Council appointed. We had Business Oregon representatives, Department of Land Conservation participated in our technical advisory group meetings. We had three meetings with the consultant as they started to draft documents. So, we've had reviews by that group. Traded Sector Representatives, Utilities, Economic Development, Jamie and our Public Works served. So, it was a fairly large committee of diverse interests providing feedback. And Johnson was very responsive to that feedback. I learned a lot through the process as well.
Great. Thank you and hello, everyone. So, again, I'm the consultant that worked on the, this report. We also worked with MIG or Mig, as he mentioned, which is another firm. And they did a lot of the mapping work and the land inventory work, which we'll talk about in a minute. So, I'm going to basically go through kind of an overview of what's in the EOA. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to at least glance at it in your packet. It's a long document. There's a lot of stuff in there and we can't all cover it all. So, we're gonna just be doing an overview. And of course, I can answer any questions you have, but just doing the, doing the greatest hits. The, and then at the end, I'm gonna, we'll be turning it back over to staff to talk about some of the recommendations and policies actually coming out of these findings. So, these are the components, major components of an EOA. The economic trends, target industries. You do a forecast of job growth and land need. That's basically the 20-year demand side. And then you do a comparison to the land inventory. That's the supply side. And do that comparison and see what, what it says about the situation in the community for both economic development and also employment lands. So, when we say employment lands, we're talking about lands that are zoned appropriately for either commercial use, retail, office, all those kinds of things, or industrial use. So, the, there's the whole other process as referred to for your residential zones, but this one is looking at your employment zones. Next slide. So, in this process, through having the technical advisory group, which was, really was a well-composed and involved group, and we've, the important part of this process is to focus on what the individual community needs. This is a process that the state requires every once in a while, but it also allows for a lot of individual, community-level input on what the city itself and its residents want to do. There's room to be aspirational about your economic goals and try to make it your own process. And so, that's really what we tried to do. So, we started by talking about the economic advantages and potential of the community. A lot of them are tied to the centralized location between the Portland Metro and Salem Metro. That has a lot of advantages in both creating markets for businesses, Woodburn businesses to serve. It's also good for the local workforce to have a large sort of labor shed and places they can go to work and vice versa. It's good for attracting possible labor from the greater region. So, it's really a great advantage to Woodburn to have the central location that it does. Some of these others are related to that. So, one of the transportation connectivity, the location on the highway and the freeway and highway network and the rail network, all these things help emphasize that importance of the central location and accessibility. The freeway in particular and the interchange allows for, is very excellent for business visibility and access for their employees and customers. Quality of life is an important one. Woodburn is a very nice community, growing community that is going to be good for attracting new industry here and growing the employers you already have. And economic development partnerships, these are the ties that the community's constantly sort of working on with both local organizations and your existing businesses, plus recruiting new businesses and working with other agencies around the state that help, that also work in economic development. And then you have some tools here in Woodburn already, which is great. So, you have an enterprise zone, an opportunity zone. Both of those offer some tax benefits and incentives for attracting new employers. And you have an urban renewal district, which creates a pot of financing that can be used for economic development initiatives, among other things. Next slide.
I think you've muted yourself. I can't hear anything.
Excuse me. I just accidentally did that. Pardon. Thank you, Emma.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. In terms of the types of breakdown of industries, which we'll talk about in a minute, and also skill and education levels, Woodburn is slightly more blue collar in comparison to the county and the state. And that will impact the type of workforce you have and the, the prospects for industries going forward. And on the right there is a, is just a little graphic that illustrates commuting patterns. So, this is something that's, that's fairly common in a lot of communities, but especially of one like Woodburn, again, that's well situated regionally. And what you see is that about 1,800 employees there in the middle, those are the people who both live and work in Woodburn. You have roughly 7,700 workers coming in to work local jobs. And you have about 8,500 locals who go out of the community to work in, around the region. So, again, that, that's fairly typical, but what it does is it represents both, for economic development's sake, both opportunities and, you know, maybe a challenge, or if the community would like to create more local jobs and have more jobs here so that fewer people have to communicate, commute out of the region to find their primary employment.
Brendan, do you think this is, how typical is this number for, say, you know, a Lamont Valley community? I'm sure Tilmok and things are different. It's interesting. I was, I was at a conference last week and I was with the Planning Director for Wilsonville. As you can imagine, they're, they're sort of an anomaly, right? Wilson has a tremendous number of jobs and employers in their community. I think their number was like 28,000 jobs or something. It was just mind-blowing how many jobs they had. And we talked a bit about this and I was like, well, how many of those come in? And it was something around 75, 80% of the jobs come in to Wilsonville for, for a job.
Because you've only got 10,000 people living there?
It's pretty, but that's a bit of an anomaly. But I was just curious how this kind of stacks up, maybe opposed to Wilsonville.
Yeah. This looks fairly typical to me. It's the, the number of local residents who stay and work in town, maybe a little low, but not, not too low. In the metro area, which you cite, there's the most cross-commuting. That's very common for people to live in one town. And they're all obviously connected and border each other. So, it's, there's a much more cross-commuting.
Do we ever look at the why? I mean, I know why I drive outside of Woodburn, but as we're doing these economic studies, do we figure out why people are leaving or, or why they're coming?
So, usually it has to do with just the mix of employment that's available here versus elsewhere. You know, and as I said, this isn't uncommon in, in any community for people to not live and work in the same place, but.
Back, going back to your next page, the one for Marion County is really different.
Yeah, Marion County definitely keeps.
Why would that be so different?
Which page number were you?
It's on page five, on the report we have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so as you get up to a larger geography, it's going to start looking differently because
Oh.
more folks can be.
25 miles.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Can I make one though, Brendan? So, I would say that the EOA, the last time we looked at our economic opportunity analysis, 2001, I didn't go back and look at the commute patterns, but the city most recently completed Goal 10, the Housing Needs Assessment, in 2019. And then Chris and his team was required by the state and the Planning Commissioners that were here in 2020 and 2021 to do the housing, middle housing changes. And so, the Development Act activity map shows that we've seen a significant number of housing units. And so, the EOA is looking to now balance all of the housing that's, that's come and say, okay, we have housing here. We have folks here. The numbers are gonna get askew, more job opportunities. Who are we going to target and work on? So, I think the timing of these, you know, of course, you want to have the jobs and the housing at the same time. But the timing of that, the state's mandate for the Housing Needs Assessment and middle housing required us to address that first.
And just to clarify, are we looking at just like full-time jobs or is this including other part-time positions? So, this is, this is what's called covered employment, meaning that it's not, this isn't all jobs. This is covered, it's all covered employment and that is any job that essentially is covered by unemployment insurance. And then there's another segment that is, of folks who tend to be, you know, contractors or self-employed or business owners or things like that, who don't fall in that category. So, this is, I, yeah, I would emphasize not to get too hung up on those specific numbers, although I know they look highly specific. But that's not, that's not full employment. It's most employment, but not, but not full. Yeah. But it does include full and part-time jobs if they're covered. Yeah. Next slide. Thank you. So, this estimate is for 2023, this does include our attempt to also estimate the non-covered employment that I was just referring to. So, this is our estimate of total employment. It's very close to 12,000, a little bit less than 12,000. And you can see the breakdown there of the different sectors that your current employment is found in. Retail is your, is the largest sector, but you also see healthcare and your natural resources, sort of support sectors. So, these are companies that support and supply the agricultural industry in the surrounding area. Probably some forests and fishing and hunting too, but mostly agriculture. And you have a, you have a decent mix of different employment types, especially construction, manufacturing, transportation. So, that's a good thing to see, a good spectrum of different types of sectors well represented in the community. It's, it makes the community resilient to different economic impacts. It may hurt one industry, but not another, those types of things. So, there is, as mentioned, it's about 12,000 local jobs. That's growth of 28% since 2010. So, that's fast growth and it comes out to about 2.2% annually, which is important for how we forecasted growth going forward, which we'll talk about in just a minute. Are there questions on this slide before we move on? Okay.
We seem to have like no white-collar stuff here.
Yeah. That is, that's true. So, you see sort of low representation in the information sector, you know, finance and those types of things, and greater in some of the others. As I'll talk about in a minute, when we start talking about target industries, you know, it would be great to add some of that mix. We'd love to see that. But also, you know, many of these sectors are actually quite high-paying and, you know, they are, they are strong sectors in manufacturing, construction, healthcare, those are, can all be, you know, excellent career track and high-income jobs. But yeah, some of the white-collar jobs are less represented.
Both in Bill.
So, that gets us into target industries. So, those are just some of the trends of where we're starting from. And there's, they're more in the report and there's, there's an appendix actually that talks more about state and national trends as well, if you're interested in that. But we use that as part of the basis, along with the economic goals, to talk about what the community would like to see going forward. What, which of these industries is strong now and which it will be a basis of growth over the next 20 years? And what would we like to emphasize? So, the, we've talked about this a lot with the tag. We made some suggestions. We have a few different metrics that we look at that rate different industries by how well they're represented in the community now versus, you know, the share of that you would see nationally. So, for instance, if you have 9% employment in manufacturing, that's lower nationally. So, that means you have stronger representation here. The other, another indicator we look at is how fast they've been growing and may continue to grow. And then we look at statewide forecasts that they do for the region. They usually look at it on a, in a larger region of two or three counties. But we factor in that too and what they think is going to happen. And then we talk about all this and laid out some choices for the tag. And the, next slide, please. So, the target industries that we ended up sort of focusing on for the next 20 years of growth were the manufacturing. That is, you already have good representation of that here. As I mentioned, those are, it's a pretty high-paying sector. You've got, especially I think right now, wood products manufacturing and food products manufacturing are well represented. But we made sure to lay out in our target industry section that the community is also interested in advanced manufacturing, high-tech manufacturing, opportunities related to growth in the data center industry, all these, all these things that are big now. There's no reason that Woodburn can't participate in that if you have the sites available. Transportation, warehousing and utilities is a big one. That is the category that the new Amazon facility would fall into, for instance. So, we know that that's going to be a pretty major employer. We also know that they picked this area for a reason. You know, and other companies are going to notice that. So, there's potential to get more of those types of distribution facilities. But transportation and utilities are also two parts of that that are also growing. We had representation from PGE on the bag. And they talked about the potential of growth and improbable growth in utilities here in, in Woodburn and.
Didn't they just pull out?
Didn't they just pull out, you, PG pull away, close? On 214 wasn't.
No, I'm sorry. What's the question?
214 wasn't there PG or semi utility?
They're still located up there. Uh, what's of interest is they, and this is public, they purchased a, a large piece of property on the southwest side of the, of town. They're looking to do a future redevelopment.
Future.
Right. So they're making some significant improvements, um, here in town, expansion of the, the kind of operations. It's more of a, it'll be more of a regional facility. And I think that's what he's talking about. You know, it's, it's always this challenge. Um, and I appreciate the, the comment of, whoa, this sounds stupid, but why not just fill with white collar jobs? What, what are we targeting? We're targeting $180,000 finance jobs. That sounds great. But you can't do that because what we really look at is, well, what's, what serves this market? What is this demographic? What do our location? What areas are growing in this region? Right? And then we have to go in and cherry pick the, those things that we like from that area. Right? I mean, that's sort of how I think of it. I think of it as, it's not like you just say, well, these are our, our targeted industries are based on a pretty detailed analysis of what our sort of the, the benefits of this region or workforce, the kind of thing.
Available.
Right. And then we pick the best of those pieces and then we have to make sure we have the land and, and policies available to make those things happen and bring those industries in.
And none of this that I'm talking about now or the forecasts I'll talk about in a minute, none of that forecloses getting any other kind of business, you know, if the, if our forecast is half of what actually happens, that's, that's great. And that's, nothing stops that. Then to, there's no rule that says you can't have other types of industries. So.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't catch this earlier. We're missing one bullet.
Oh, yeah.
We're on page, uh, 21 of the report and it's tourism. Um, so there's actually seven targeted industries and we'll, we'll correct that. And that was included in the last EOA as well. Um, this is, you know, continuing to, to grow, uh, in our region. Uh, in fact, we have our economic development department continuing to support tourism and working together in North Marion County with that initiative. And, uh, you recently heard about the shuttle. So I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch up, but we have seven targeted industries in this EOA.
Renata, is it in the document?
It's on page 21. Yes. And then what?
Twenty-one.
Page 21 of the EOA. That's Appendix D and then.
I see manufacturing.
Seven total.
So yeah, there's, yeah, and on the next page is.
Well, it's in the, those bullet points. Yes. But is there a paragraph describing?
Yes, there should.
I read, I thought I read it.
Uh, for the tourism specifically? Yeah, that's on page, oh, I'm sorry. It, it's on page 24. It, here it's referred to accommodation and food services, which is sometimes we lump together as the tourism industry.
Good.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Renata. I'm sorry that I missed that. Um, so these, this is the, our 20-year forecast moving forward. Again, we're starting at about 12,000 jobs and, um, we've, uh, we worked with the tag and, uh, did some analysis to figure out what is the, um, likely job growth in the community and what's realistic while still reflecting, uh, the aspirations of the community. Um, so our forecast is, uh, arrives at a growth of about 2.3% annually. That is in keeping with, um, how the, how the, uh, jobs have been growing in the community, uh, over the last decade or more. And we forecast that that community can certainly keep that up. And you're already seeing very large employers coming in, um, that, um, are already going to add a significant amount of employment. Um, so that, uh, the forecast is for, uh, again, 20 years, about 6,800 new jobs. The, uh, breakdown on the right there is the, um, the, our estimates of where those, uh, types of jobs will fall. Um, the, uh, so the target industries just mentioned, they're all, uh, this reflects that we expect a higher amount of growth in those, uh, sectors as they're targeted. And that's what the community aspires to see. The transportation and warehousing utilities sector, as you can see, there's a, quite a large amount of employment forecasted in that sector. That does include a large amount of employment from the, um, Amazon facility. So that's one reason that, that you see that being larger than the other categories. Um, is, are there questions about this?
I have something with the leisure and hospitality is, uh, uh, the only thing I can think of is the rec wanting to expand the aquatic center. What other? Is there any aligned already with that? Um, or not?
Yes, that's the, just to be confusing, that's yet another way to refer to the tourism industry. So leisure and hospitality includes dining, um, and, uh, hotels. And then also anything that might be considered recreation, like, like literal tourism focused businesses.
Thank you.
Called NICS codes, that, the data that we get.
Yeah.
Um, would it cause confusion for another reviewer if we were to change that title? Do, do you recommend we leave it? Because these are based on codes that they download and the employment department provides to us. So.
Right.
While we've talked about different uses of tax, I, I'm going to rely on you on whether you say, yes, sure, we can change that language or no, the state is wanting us to remain within those codes.
Um, I, yes, I think I, we can do that. That's.
Just for fun. I mean, if I got this wrong. NICS is National Industry Classification System?
Yes.
Maybe? Sounds good.
Industrial classification system.
Just another way. Yeah. That's how the information, that's sort of national standard for how those.
Yeah.
So Renata, if they're in our changes, these aren't things that we have to worry about in a motion. This, all this is something that, that you're talking about, that.
No, we, we can make that.
Yeah, I've made a note. But we, we, the motion could say as commented by staff or clarified.
Um, so Chris, how many people will Amazon actually employ?
That's an excellent question. They have not opened their doors yet and
Yeah, I know.
Uh, I can only give you estimates, which is fair enough. Right. Um, they have talked about, and it seems reasonable based on the number of parking spaces, the size of the facility, the kind of operation it's going to be, that it's going to be somewhere above 1,100 employees and somewhere below 2,800 employees. How's that? Now, remember there's a couple of shifts as well and they range from part-time to full-time and they go seasonal up and downs.
But didn't they do a whole big automation thing after they built? They had to tear out and?
They do. There's a significant amount of automation, uh, in the facility, um, on the sort of the north side of the facility that, that we've ever been. A couple of people have taken the tour inside. I don't know the impacts that would have on the number of jobs in there. I just, I just had no idea. I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Antizmeja? Do we leave you out?
No, I've been on mute.
Does she have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks. So that is the jobs forecast and in a minute I'll talk about, uh, how we translate that into an estimate of land need. Um, but first let's talk about land supply. This is the buildable lands inventory. Uh, we worked, uh, very closely and intensely on this land inventory. Uh, staff had a lot of input and we really went through this with the fine tooth, tooth comb, um, to make sure we got it right. Um, and I think we, we did a good job. So the, um, I won't go into tremendous detail about how it's done, but basically we start with looking at the proper zones for commercial and industrial use. We identify all those properties. We take out the ones that are already developed, which are shown in red here and try to identify, uh, any sites that are left that are vacant, uh, in green or partially vacant, shown in yellow. Um, we also account for things like, um, environmental constraints, wetlands, floodplains, steep slopes, things that might cause some of parts of the site to not be buildable. Uh, and what we end up with is, uh, the inventory, as you see, the, um, there are two properties here on the west side. One is the large Amazon site, if you know where that is. The other is, um, there, that's a site that's currently under development by, uh, from spec development. So we treated those two sites a little differently because they're almost built. Um, they're not truly buildable land, so to speak, whereas the rest you see here is really vacant. So, um, you'll see in a minute how we, we tried to help account for those two sites. Um, but the, basically what you end up with is the inventory in the box there. So 65, uh, available commercial acres and about 190 industrial acres for a total of a little over 250 employment land acres remaining in your inventory. Uh, next slide.
And I'll just note, because I had to be reminded kindly when we were presenting this last month, I think it was the commissioner that identified, these are just the commercial and industrial lands that you're seeing. So you, you know, your community and you're wondering why is there a big hole in the center? Well, we've removed the land zone public for parks and our residential land. So as part of that screening, those steps, um, those were screened out because we're looking at employment. So it, the map does look a little funny, but we've removed other zones that we're not having a discussion on. Thanks.
This is a look at that, um, buildable inventory based on the size of those sites. And what this is showing is that in both the commercial category and the industrial category, um, Woodburn has very few large sites remaining, um, for employers. And, um, you'll see in, uh, in the commercial category, there's, uh, nothing over 10 acres. And in the industrial category, there's nothing over 20 acres. Um, the subject of large lot industrial supply is a big statewide topic right now and, uh, uh, focus of emphasis. So, um, that's, uh, something that's really important to, to keep in mind about these findings is not only do you have that sort of acreage that we're talking about, but what are the actual sites we're identifying? What kind of employers are they useful for? And what kind of employers may not find any adequate site at all if they, if they come looking? Um, because you want to be able to serve those folks.
Are you saying it's a focus statewide because it's a problem everywhere?
It is, yeah. Um, if you hear, I wish I could remember the exact number, but recently I heard the number of sites over a, a hundred acres that the entire state has sort of left and entitled with the proper zoning and so on. And it's, it's like under five. Like it's, it's hard to believe. We, you know, when big employers come to the state, we're, we've been really underserved. But like I said, that's on their radar now and they're trying to fix that.
So does that put the pressure on smaller cities that have a lot of rural land around? Was, I mean, I'm thinking about metro areas that just have nothing. Yeah, we, we, you know, you look around, we have a lot. So does that put the burden on communities like Woodburn to kind of carry the load for the state or what happens with the bigger cities? I just, I can't see 20 acres anywhere out there.
Yeah, it, you know, it's all community by community. Um, part of it is, um, the, uh, the local, um, sort of attitude towards employment growth. Um, as mentioned, this type of process can, it allows communities to be a little aspirational and you run into some communities that say, you know, we're not, you know, finding new employment land isn't a huge emphasis for us and, and for others it is. Um, what I will say is that, uh, in a community like Woodburn, because your land is available, like you say, there's a lot of it. It's mostly flat. It's all, uh, um, good transportation grid that, um, it certainly makes Woodburn a good prospect for even large lot industrial, um, in the, in the metro area. They have to contend with the fact that it's the metro government itself that makes UGB decisions and it really slows things down. Yeah.
So Chris, I'm gonna put you on the, the hot seat here. For context, what is the acreage of Amazon or Walmart?
So I think the Amazon's 80 acres is the number for the Amazon. Let me, let me go back a page, give you. So see the Amazon here is in green.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and again, I may be excluding a few.
Right, right.
The area up in here. So it's 80 acres. Now again, that's, that's a lot of square footage. That's an, that's an exceptional case. That's a pretty large site. And it's a pretty large building in terms like FAR in terms of how much development on that particular piece of property. Another one, say this spec parcel, I think this is 20 acres, 20, I'm sorry, this spec parcels to the 20 or 30.
Thirty.
Thirty acres. And that's a 500,000 square foot, one-story building, I'll give you names. So 500,000 square feet on this, we're just kind of getting a feel for how relative this is for the rest.
Right. You know, we're like, how big is, you know, because we have zero. It's like, well, how big is?
It isn't, you know, we get through sort of Jamie, our economic development office, Jamie Johnson's, we get leads all the time, right? We get requests for, I wanna, I'm looking to build a Chinese company wants to open a new factory, right? So I mean, it could be anything from that to some, someone moving regionally from Austin or from Phoenix looking to move here. They almost always need far, far more land than we have available. And you can imagine how tough that is if you're, again, as you say, in the metro area, there's just no land there, right? So that's why you have these, you, you hear all these land use contentious issues in Washington County. You know, Intel and those other big, high-paying, high-tax-paying, high-employment centers, um, those big fab machines or what are they called? Their fab warehouses? They, whatever they're.
Yeah, small city.
Right. They are. These things are enormous. I mean, they are massive, right? And they just don't have the land there. So that's where you have this huge pressure pushing out into, into Washington County. But they want to keep jobs in that area, right? These are high-paying, important jobs. Those kind of industries need to stay near each other, right? Intel's not going to go to Tillamook and drop it in the center, even if they had the land out there. They need to be around those other satellite kind of industries.
That supply.
And they.
They need to be around their suppliers and their vendors.
And Tektronix, all these other companies kind of build around each other. So that's sort of the hub that they have out there. And it's important, frankly, for the state to make sure that that happens. Our part in that is, is, is Brendan pointed out, our real strength is we are right next to I5 and we have a lot of flat vacant land here. Um, and it's important for us to take advantage of it, uh, the best way we can to get the best jobs that we can on those sites when they become available.
There's not a lot of green on this map.
No.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, so if the other, the next slide shows, um, how much is available, zero to five acres of land, I can see commercial use of, you know, smaller land, um, and easily utilizing that. But for industrial use, what's the smallest amount of acreage that they typically require? Because I, it makes it a little bit more difficult for me to see a, any industrial business being able to utilize anything less than five acres.
Anything, uh, yeah, I, I think you're right. And once you get down to things that are smaller than five acres, it gets difficult. There are all kinds of, there are niche businesses that can fit on, on an acre or two or three, um, you know, metal shops or, uh, small businesses that maybe serve other industry in town. Um, but, um, for, for growth and business recruitment, you're, that's not going to be the sweet spot. You need, you definitely need to have a supply of the larger lots. Those are the, the businesses that are really looking around and any smaller industrial sites that are left are likely to be used by, um, businesses that may already be in the community or, uh, would be founded by someone close to the community, that kind of thing.
It, it's interesting. Um, we talk a lot about, you know, in industrial economics development terms, I always talk about, you know, getting that big draw, right? You want to get the Intel, the Amazon, et cetera. Those are great and they're wonderful, but the truth is, most of the job growth that we see comes from all of our existing small businesses. I'm sure Brendan knows the kind of number that we have here. Most of the businesses in our community, um, we'll say premiums on, now, are coming from smaller businesses, right? And when you look up sort of in our industrial area up here in the northeast corner, most of these sites are, as you say, you're, you're absolutely correct. Very few of them are less than three acres. It's really hard to be less than that. But there's a lot of successful businesses up here from Fleet Homes and, and all the other businesses and Gem. These are longstanding, important employers that we have here in town. Um, and over on the other side, right now, our current. And over on the other side, right now, our current biggest employers are sort of Winko and Do It Best. They're on these larger sites, which sort of makes sense. We were hoping to take advantage of those. But what's interesting is, you know, Do It Best just recently expanded, right? They found a little bit of room here on the back of their site to grab because they're doing well. And there's not, there's nothing we like more than having a current, already established business grow and stain down. That's the best thing for us, best thing for our employees, best thing for the people that live here. It's the best thing for the community. Grabbing the new shiny thing is super and we're glad to get it. But our real focus always has to be on keeping these current employees and the current employers, the good ones here and keeping them happy.
So here we get down to kind of one of the big purposes of doing an E O A. And one of the main takeaways is what is that comparison of the twenty year land demand to the amount of, amount of buildable land that's left? So what you see there in the sort of first numbers column is our estimate of twenty year demand. We take the employment growth we see. We apply a series of assumptions and methodology of the types of real estate that employees in those sectors tend to use. What kind of buildings are those? Or is it a factory? Is it a warehouse? Is it an office building? And the amount of then land that that type of real estate tends to need. So through this process, we will come up with assumptions of the amount of land that's going to be needed for that forecasted job growth of the sixty-eight hundred new employees over twenty years. So in gross acres, you see that we come up with an estimated demand of a hundred and seventy-one commercial gross acres and four hundred and sixty industrial gross acres. So it's a lot. And we compare that to in the middle box there, the buildable lands inventory. The first column under the buildable lands inventory is most of what you saw on the map. We added a separate column there in the middle that reflects the Amazon site and the spec site I mentioned. Those two known sites, that's the hundred and ten point eight acres you see there. But it all gets us to that final column on the, well, the second to last column is the total B L I plus the known sites, two hundred and fifty-two point nine acres. That's the supply. So in the final column, we compare the two. And what we see is that our estimate, our forecasted land need is in excess of the remaining inventory of land, the supply you have left. And so over that twenty year period, it is our estimate that the, that Woodburn is going to need additional land for both commercial and industrial uses going forward. The totals there are a hundred and seven acres of commercial and two hundred and seventy-three acres of industrial for a total of almost three hundred and eighty acres of additional employment land. Again, that's over twenty years, so it's a gradual process. But that's, that is the forecast and the comparison. Are there questions about that? Comments? You know, that's the next step. So a summary of findings before we turn it back over to staff to talk about goals and policies. So the major takeaways are that Woodburn has a strong, has good economic development advantages. You've had good job growth for the last twenty years. There's no reason for that to stop. You've got additional housing on the way. You've got a really big employer on the way with a lot of, bringing a lot of cachet and a lot of jobs with it. So things are looking good. You have those advantages. So we project that growth to continue to be strong going forward. But unfortunately, you have a falling amount of employment land, especially in larger lot sizes. And so the, we find that there is a need going forward for additional land. That is sort of a summary of the factual findings.
I appreciate that. So that sort of makes up that E O A and B L I, those are the two documents you had in there that you offered. The other component to this, it's obviously a lot thinner is these are recommended changes to the actual comprehensive plan text that has goals and policies. So we have one, and I think I can quickly summarize them. They aren't, space, there isn't a dramatic change in there. There isn't some dramatic, you know, new, whatever, like you said, it's, it's sort of mind blowing. It's going to change some policy of the city. It's really about a couple of things. First of all, it was severely out of date. There's a lot of references to the two thousand and one E O A, things of that nature that had to be straightened out. We need to update it and reference it. There's a lot of actions and recommendations that were in the current comprehensive plan that we wanted to clean up and get rid of. It talks about creating new districts, like a new mixed use village, doing a new corridor plan for nine. Those are all finished. We've done them all. So we need to, a lot of the strikeout acts, most of it is just kind of cleaning up older things that we had. But then we have some of the, the new targeted industries that we have in here. We have a couple of policies in here. The last one, the third one in here is something new. Cities are prioritized, development improvement, necessary infrastructure to support the establishment growth of a major medical center. And we have this for the other targeted industries as well. And again, these are, these are comprehensive plan policies are just that, that these are goals and policies. They're really broad, right? They're broadly written. And the idea is those are sort of the, the guidelines and the vision for the city as we move forward over the next twenty years. So we are looking to expand and bring in a major medical center if we can. We should be looking at, for example, redoing our transportation system plan and our, our utility master plans, water sewer, et cetera, to make sure that we can provide services to the Southwest District to support a future industrial development when it comes in here. Doesn't mean we have to pay for it, but we need to have the plans ready, the infrastructure, infrastructure set up and included in our long range plans. That's really what these are. Since this is big picture looking twenty years out.
We address, I know you guys started the second exit I five, but is that addressed at all?
It's not in here. And I think I might have told you, one of the, the many sub area plans that we're doing, I'm working on one right now, which has to do with transportation. Fancy coincidence, right here in the Southwest District, looking at what it might be for industrial properties. That plan will look exactly at that issue and what the pros and cons were. And we'll get feedback from the state. Sent you to look at what would it entail to do it? What kind of land do we need? What kind of studies would you need? Who do you need to involve? And really kind of do a bit of modeling. What impact would it have? Maybe it's only an exit. Maybe it's a full blown. Maybe it's phased to be one or the other. Maybe it's an accessory that gets us to another. So those are things we will look at in a sub area plan as part of our transportation system. I thought I would, let me, let's save timeline. I want to touch on.
I have a question.
Oh, please, please, I'm sorry.
On, on F one six, I think, no, F one five and F one seven, those words, urban renewal are in there. Urban renewal funding. I guess it doesn't really mean our current urban renewal. Is that the secret to this?
So a couple of things. And why don't I, I'm gonna jump ahead on the slides, I'm sorry.
It's Urban Renewal District, though.
I know it does. Let me come back. No, I can, I can get this. Okay. Let me jump.
Page ten.
We're looking at exhibit A of the packet. It is, page ten, I think, exhibit A, though, of the, from the staff report. So it's, it was included as the first exhibit to your packet.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about, and I apologize, I, and the commissioner raises before the meeting, just something that I should always keep in mind. We're sometimes fast and loose with a lot of the, first of all, acronyms that we use, whether it's, you know, B L I and NICS and things like this. And also when we start talking about a variety of different plans, some of the planning terminology. So a couple of things, the comprehensive plan, a lot of those goals and policies talk about two different things. Let me try to separate. One is our urban renewal area. Right?
Yeah.
Which is, this is the urban renewal area. It's basically our downtown, right? And it extends, it has a few fingers that extend out to other areas. But that's its own, it's its own little taxing district, right? So there's a, if I get too complicated, it's, it's its own little governing district that we have downtown. So there's a certain amount of the money that comes from taxes on the tax, on the taxpayers downtown, stays here, gets reinvested into the downtown, doesn't fall into the general fund. That's a real, that urban renewal area that we have, and we have an urban renewal agency. It's essentially the city council, but they sit and make decisions on it. That's a really important economic development tool that we utilize. It's helped, it's helped grow all kinds of businesses downtown. Of course, it funds all the public improvements you see that happen downtown from the park to the first street improvements. And in our comprehensive plan, and what you heard Brendan talk a little bit about was one of the things that makes the advantages to coming to Woodburn and the things that we think are going to spur more growth are the fact that we have things like an economic development department. We have Jamie John and people that work here. We have an urban renewal district downtown that, that is specifically designed to grow and spend money on public infrastructure downtown. And in our, I shouldn't say just downtown, there's a few extra fingers outside of it, but most of it's in the downtown area to help grow and keep businesses here. It helps to encourage businesses. Those kinds of tools, like the enterprise zone that we have, which is a tax payment program we have for certain properties, all those things help draw and lure business. And we talked a lot in the economic development plan in the policies about making sure we keep those going, right? A lot of cities don't have those tools. They don't use them for a lot of different reasons. We think they're important. So that's urban renewal.
You mean, it's kind of a tool that we're using. It's not specifically the current that we've adopted, but maybe a future one.
That's one that we actually have, that urban renewal district.
Well, I know we currently have it, but I'm just wondering, when this says urban renewal funds might be used on downtown infrastructure, I'm wondering, can we use our current urban renewal? Because I personally think some of our funds are being directed in areas.
In different ways, right? It has to stay in the district, but the district is kind of big and wave.
Well, I mean, budget wise, can you shift money from one?
Absolutely not. It must, you're all urban renewal, great question. This came up this afternoon, actually, with the finding.
Was it in discussion?
All urban renewal dollars must stay in the urban renewal district. You couldn't go five feet off of it, which is actually a reason we're looking to change the urban old boundary very shortly.
Like the public art and mural over to undergrounding.
That's it. It's exactly right. So if you wanted to spend urban renewal dollars, five feet outside of the district, and I mean outside the right of way to do sidewalk, to do a public art project, you couldn't do it. It has to stay in that boundary. It's an actual legal description. Very interesting.
Isn't most of that money going towards just roof repairs and stuff like that? Which to me really doesn't, I mean, it's, may save the building, but I don't know. It doesn't seem to improve downtown.
Well, it's supposed to go to capital improvements and it can go towards, usually goes to, it usually goes to infrastructure improvements and business development improvements that help make, increase the value of the properties. The whole point of it is to grow the overall tax base in that district. So putting on a new roof means that they're going to be paying, sell the property for more money. Now they're bringing more money in for the next ten years every time they get taxed and more money gets thrown into this big.
I don't think those funds actually are given to the businesses. Aren't they loaned at low interest rates?
Oftentimes, yeah.
But they need to match.
Yeah, there's, it's a, there's, we have a match and we, there's a, there's a couple of different improvement programs. That's actually a pretty small portion of the, of the urban renewal district. There's some money that goes there, most of it is infrastructure paid.
We go to, talk to you about our personal opinions about what to do with the.
You can come to an urban renewal agency meeting and speak your.
My city council member?
Yes, if they were around.
Look at this.
And if you want information about the DARs chat afterwards, I'm on the DARs committee and I can tell you exactly how we're spending that money and how much.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with, with the downtown. I'm not disagreeing with that. It's more.
Unfortunately, I will say that we've had to, we've had to invest in roofs and HVACs and things. But the same ones are coming back now and going, okay, now that our roof isn't leaking, can you help us paint the building?
Well, this, you know, I, I think, you know, when you, when you are decorating your town, it needs to be, you know, properly put together first. That's my, you know.
And it doesn't, I don't know. Somehow, when I think business, I think the person whose business it is should be responsible for a lot of it. And I know I'm being very entitled, right? No, but I just think that it's your responsibility or most of it. And if you have to take out a loan or a mortgage, you do that. I mean, if you can't afford the business, why are you there?
Is that awful?
It's not awful. If, since we're on a slight divergent path, can I bring up something that came up that might be helpful? I think it'd be instructive and I neglected to bring this up earlier. There is some discussion in the plan policies about this area you see here in gray. This is our urban reserve, not to be confused with our urban renewal area. I do this all the time. We call this our U R A as well. But I want to discuss what this is very briefly. It's, it's just important as a planning commission, you sort of understand what it is. This area in gray that you see highlighted in here, it's currently not in our U G, it's down here. It's currently not in our U G B, all right? It's outside the urban growth boundary for the city. When the city went through our urban growth boundary adjustment process eight years ago, when we looked to do an expansion of our urban growth boundary to bring in areas such as that Amazon property, it was outside. There was a lot of back and forth between the state and some other parties who were involved in, who had objections to the city's urban growth boundary, where we, where we wanted to expand our boundary. And ultimately, we came down to the lines that we currently have, right? It's an urban growth boundary line that runs like this. This is our current urban growth boundary runs like that. And then they carved out this area in gray, which is flat farmland currently. And it's actually written in our agreement with the, the came, our approval from the state. It's written in our agreement that we have with Marion County about how we treat these lands. And we gave, it had, it says a spe, very special classification with the state. It's called an urban reserve. That's really unique. Not every city has one. I think it's a new invention, probably a decade or so. I don't think it even existed about a decade ago. It's something they created. Just think of it as the first piece of property that the city, all cities, if they have an urban reserve, are to look at to bring in when it's time to expand, right? And that's really a good idea. So if we didn't have this little expansion area, this is sort of the first piece we're supposed to look at when and if we expand our U G B. And it's already been identified that way. That way, those people that own that property know that before anybody expands out here on the west side of town or anywhere else in the south, we're first going to look at this property. And that's really good, right? Homeowners and property owners and farmers need to know what the long term plan is for, for their property. If you're over on the east side of town, I can tell you right now, there's not going to be a U G B expansion for about thirty, forty years. It's just not going to happen. But these people are aware that, oh, it might happen soon. As soon as the conditions are right for the city to expand, they're going to look right here first. So now the city knows about it. We can plan for it, start thinking about how we're going to grow there. And what's really important is, again, once the city makes a determination that we must grow, say for industrial lands, say for large lot industrial lands, which might be the case here very shortly, that will be the first piece of property that we're going to look at for a U G B expansion, if that makes sense.
So we kind of apply for this to start looking for these three hundred and eighty acres, whatever it is?
Well, let me, I'm going to move on to the next, kind of next slide. Let me slide ahead, but let me bring it back up here. And it's kind of the last, next to last slide I have. Let me bring it up and make sure it's visible for Annabelle. Can you see that, okay, Annabelle?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, great, thank you. So just basic timeline, because we're only looking at the E O A, B L I and adjustments to our plan. We're on the big red line. This is our recommendation meeting for the planning commission. Assuming you make a recommendation, we'll have a city council public hearing on December eleventh. We usually come back because it's in ordinance. We'll assume January of twenty twenty-four will adopt this formal E O A and B L I. If that happens, this is the, what'll happen after that's adopted. The council would direct staff to initiate any action to address that employment landing, that deficit. Looks like we got a hole, we have a need. What are the things we might look at? One of those things that we might get instruction from the city council to do is to consider what we have here at the bottom, a future comprehensive plan map amendment or a U G B expansion. So we might look at other policy changes, but I expect they might say, why don't we go look at the next step, processing a U G B expansion, which is an entirely new application. processing a U G B expansion, which is an entirely new application. It's a different process that we've processed to the state.
Already drafted, right?
It's, we'll see what happens. So that's, that's a really good way to kind of wrap it up and and kind of bring me to the summary. I have a quick recommendation. You probably know where staff's coming from. We're recommending approval of the documents before you as they're laid out. We think it's consistent with the statewide planning goals, organ administrative rules, as well as our other comprehensive plan goals and policies. We think it's consistent with all those things. And we have a sample motion at the bottom, if you were so inclined, and it's not verbatim, but it's very similar to the one that's in your staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
You pulled the tag. What was the general feeling of the participants did?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I wasn't there for any final discussion.
But how about in general, made you feel like there was a good representation across the board?
Yeah, participation is really impressive. Yeah, I was amazed.
So we've had a lot of, a lot of people had the opportunity to share their perspective, and it was considered.
Yes, it was very, it was impressive. The the information that I heard at the meetings. But I was in for the final meeting, so I didn't hear conclusions, but.
So Chair, I can add that the last meeting was when we did review the comprehensive plan goals and policies. So that was the last component. Very similar to how we've presented it to you tonight in the packet. So that was when we reviewed planning goals and policies. Myself, Chris, Jamie, and Colin, the senior planner, reviewed the statewide plan or the the city's comprehensive plan goals as well. So we've had thorough staff review at that that last meeting along with the tag. I learned a lot in the the process while the state requires us to have local national and state trends included in this EOA that's sixty pages, for example. When the tag saw the first draft, and again, the consultant laid it out as the state says, you shall lay it out this way, and the tag said, can we make this an appendix? We know you have to do it, but we don't want to read about national trends. We want to learn about Woodburn. And so they said, of course, we can do that. So the group was carefully reviewing it. I think the conversations with Business Oregon, who's the state Economic Development Agency and the local utilities and trends that they're seeing from companies and what they need and and just how much infrastructure is needed as far as utility to supply, you know, Wi Fi and the demands of not only work from home and that increase. So learned a lot from the group through the process and several tag members with our growing population, you know, identified the need for increased you know, medical services here, you know, folks are commuting southward or northward, and your population is growing. And the hope is that with that population growth, suppliers for services such as that, even if it's not, you know, our population size is not there yet that I think at the next hospital maybe will be located. But, you know, ancillary, you know, appointments and making sure you get the emergency medical clinics, things like that, I think are reasonable to expect. So conversations like that.
And you mentioned, one of the things that was brought up that I've thought about was the trends to work from home. And I don't know if that's a short term trend or a long term trend. And as we are looking at the jobs that are here, a lot of people are now not doing that commute, but their job is technically somewhere else.
That's true. Yeah.
And how have, how has the state and everybody in the country as a whole started to look at that part of the trend?
Excuse me, it's a very, it's a meaningful trend, and it's a big topic of conversation, but unfortunately, there's not great data or numbers available yet, even, you know, we're close to four years after the pandemic started, I guess, but so there aren't a lot of great numbers to hang analysis on, but it is, it's it is a trend. It's expected to continue. Generally, people who are kind of forecasting or guessing think that it might moderate a little bit. You know, some folks who did work from home will be asked to come back to the office and so on, but and also that it will mostly has and will continue to mostly impact office space. Not so much industrial at all or retail.
I agree with that, but I guess this is a secondary question really for the city. And when we talk about infrastructure, I know one of the struggles we have, I work for the state of Oregon, and I'd say ninety percent of the people in my office work from home. And one of the struggles that we are seeing is the accessibility of Wi Fi, the, you know, how fast is the Wi Fi in the area and things along that line. Are we as a city looking at those improvements to our infrastructure? I live literally on the wrong side of the track. The wire comes to here and stops. And so my connectivity is not the best. But
Yeah, I I don't know that we've actually had a bigger, a longer discussion about sort of those long term impacts and what it means to have this many more people working out of their homes. I can tell you some, something that's interesting that sometimes the market kind of gets in front of sort of government regulations. This happens a lot of the time. They they serve, they serve.
I work for the state.
So we so we have a lot of single family homes being built, and I don't know if you're familiar with those, in in the Smith development, Smith Creek development, the homes that were being built there were building. This was probably two years ago or eighteen months ago. They started bringing in floor plans, very unusual floor plans we hadn't used, we hadn't seen before with an extra room in them, right? And it looks almost like an ADU, almost like an accessory dwelling, but it's not an accessory dwelling. Now, we have to watch really closely over that because there's all kinds of different requirements if you want to have an additional dwelling unit, you know, two dwelling units in one home. And they were very careful to make not make it when they said, no, that's not what it is. These are literally offices for people to work out of their home. So it's just interesting. So this happens a lot. So those private builders and those homeowners are going to put the demands on Comcast to make sure that they get the upgraded facilities in those homes when they move in. So we were getting yelled at because it's Wave Comcast, and I can't remember the other one down there. Sort of looking at the various, who's going to provide the service? And you know, you know, who's going to get it? It's going to be the one that provides the fastest service at the best discount because there's some competition there. That's just an interesting fact. It wasn't something I had seen, and we weren't really sure what it was like. What are these, right? This is an odd, never seen anybody just build these into these. These aren't soup. These aren't, you know, eight hundred thousand dollar homes. These are a little smaller, but there's a separate little room separated just for their little little office in house office. And they were just building them in. They weren't asking for them on site.
We also saw one where they had the EVs in all of the garages that were built.
Right, they just put them in.
Yeah. I know that took us way out, but the work, the way we are working is changing. The the way we, what we need in an industry is changing. A lot of people are going to these, oh, my offices in, I work in Salem, but I I use this office downtown to do my work.
Yeah, shared space and things like that, yeah. Hopefully, we'll start to get some better information on that. It's interesting that Chris brings that up. We also work on the goal line, housing needs analysis. And the work from home comes up a lot in those projects as a home, as a housing issue. If people can work, if they can live wherever now and and work remotely, it becomes more of a housing issue than an employment land issue, right? So it's very interesting and and important. I wish I had a better answer for you now, but hopefully we'll get more clarity on it.
That's where a lot of white home jobs.
Exactly. But if we're a blue collar, then a little different.
Yeah, so blue collars tends to be those jobs that have to be done on site. Yeah, and so when it comes to the work from home and attracting those types of remote workers, then it becomes a livability issue. It's about schools. It's about making the community a place that people want to be just for living. Yeah.
Commissioner, ahead, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Anybody, any other questions? Any other discussion? I'd entertain a motion if we're ready.
Okay, I move the planning commission recommend city council adoption of the economic opportunities analysis, the buildable lands inventory and updated goals and policies as part of the comprehensive plan amendment based on the analyses and findings in the staff report and as discussed during this hearing.
All second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, do I need to officially close the hearing?
Yes.
Hearing is closed. Okay, that's on the agenda. Do we have any updates from staff?
I do. Give me one second. I want to put our screen back up, see how I do. This is why I'm not usually in charge of this. See how I did? All right. Just very briefly, Madam Chair, just to let you know, December fourteenth be your next meeting. I'm not going to have a meeting for the Thanksgiving break. There will not be one over the Christmas holiday break either. So December fourteenth, last meeting of the year, last meeting of twenty thirteen. We have two items on there, at least two quasi judicial items. One's an annexation. The other is a new residential development. They're both pretty, or at least one of them be pretty detailed, be a lot, a lot, a lot to discuss in there for it. And we may have a discussion from the Parks Department about a new Parks Master Plan they're putting together. Just a little discussion about it, not something to vote on, to kind of introduce it as we did before. They've been working for a year now with a consultant on new Parks Master Plan, Parks and Open Space Plan, I think it's called. I want to give you a little kind of a heads up what's what it's going to be all about. That was all I had.
Where is that covering?
The, this is going to be on, there's a proposal along, this is on Young Street, where you know where those Young Street Market used to be. It's essentially that piece of property. It's a little bit wider.
Okay, well, before I close the hearing, I did want to take a moment to recognize our veterans as Saturday is Veterans Day. So from the planning commission, I'm going to just tell all of our service men and women, thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate it. I hope you all enjoy Veterans Day.
Thanks.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Moved in second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, Annabelle.
Thank you.
I'm glad this was a short one.